Who is sitting here right next to me. We're keeping social distance, facing in the same direction. Wit, I'd like to go into the other room nearby. Hello, everyone. That's Wit at another meeting room and then Deanna.
Deanna Lancer from TSKP. Hello, everybody.
Hi, Deanna.
So, Deanna is an architect who is familiar with library projects, having done them in the past. So, if you would permit me to share my screen, I could do a very brief PowerPoint presentation and reintroduce you to our firm and then share with you some images from the previous study that we had done.
I'm trying to get you to share the screen, Richard, and it's not letting me. Oh, you should be able to do it. Try it now.
There we go. There we go.
Okay, great. So, our presentation is divided into three parts. And I'll have Wit start. I'll do the middle part and then Tai Su will wrap it up. So Wit, if you could.
Yep. Thank you. So, some of you are maybe familiar with our firm. We were previously called Tai Su Kim Partners. The last few years, the name has changed, but we're still the same group, TSKP Studio. We've been in the area for many, many years and you may be familiar with some of our work around the area. So, we just wanted to introduce ourselves. This is our firm. We are about 27 people. Our office is down in downtown Hartford. We have a very diverse international group of staff. We have people from 11 countries in our office, which we found really enriches the culture of the office and also really contributes to the quality of the work that we do. Next. This is the leadership. Tai Su, Richard, myself, and our fourth partner Randall Luther. And then we have a number of project managers who work with us on the projects. And Deanna in the middle is the project manager and has been involved in many of our library projects.
Hey Wit, this is, interrupt one second. We need everyone to mute so there's an echo. So, if everyone would mute up. Nancy, if you can mute everyone except for the presenters.
Yep, I think I have, except for the presenter, for the three people from Tai Su Kim. So, everybody should be muted. I will mute myself as well.
Okay. This is just a list of some of the project, the library projects that we've done in recent years, both small, local neighborhood libraries, as well as some large urban libraries and some college and university libraries as well. All different types. Just sort of that previous slide, what is the, just some of the experience we have in terms of working with the groups, the user groups in the communities as we work through the design process to get the community involved in the project. This is actually a project we did, are working on now in Branch Library for the city of Hartford, the Park Street neighborhood. But it's really important as these designs, these libraries evolve is to have the community be involved and feel like they're a part of the process as we develop. Next. So, as you may know, we did some studies for Bloomfield, for the Crosser Library back in 2016. Richard was involved in that. And so, I'm going to turn it over to him to walk you through some of what we did back then and some of the options that we explored. Richard?
Great. Thanks very much, Wit. Okay, there's a lot of information here and I will try to walk you through slowly as you absorb it. We were asked to look at several sites in town, including the existing Crosser Library, the Town Hall, and then a little bit later, we were told, well, why don't you look at 330 Park Avenue as well? That was being considered at the last phase of our study. But we'll focus mostly on the two sites in the center of town, the existing Crosser Library and Town Hall. So, how do you decide which site is the appropriate site? The committee that we worked with previously had listed site selection criteria and we came up with a list of 17. And I think the important ones at that time were proximity to common activities in the downtown area, the potential market appeal, and that's student friendly, were some of the items listed. And at that time, the town was working with their economic development consultant, Goman N'York, who thought that the potential for the downtown area was high for future development. And so, we, using that recommendation from Goman N'York, the committee then looked at the Town Hall. And the program that we looked at was a facility that required about 36,000 square feet. And this comes from a worksheet that we had done with the state library board. They have a whole way of developing the amount of square feet that you need for a library project. And so, we looked at Town Hall. Town Hall is this triangular shaped parcel. Just to orient you, this is Park Avenue here on the northern edge. And on the western edge, we have Bloomfield Avenue. And the existing Town Hall is located here. And at that time, we were told that Tunnel and Wells had done a study of the building and they had looked at renovating and expanding toward the back. We did look at expanding by adding on to the existing building in this configuration, as well as adding parking around it. We looked at the future expansion of the Town Hall. And then we looked at a standalone building as well. So, this orange shape represents the amount of square footage that would be required for a two-story building. This would be adjacent to the Town Hall. The blue area represents all of the parking that would be required for this facility that would serve not only the Town Hall, but the proposed library. And we looked at also a three-story configuration, slightly different shape. And then during that study, people in town thought, well, wait a minute. Look at all that parking. Maybe we should think about consolidating that parking and putting it into a parking garage, which could be available for local businesses to use as well. So, after some thought, we looked at the possibility of adding a parking garage to this parcel, but the realization, the cost of that probably would be prohibited. We ended up with a final three-story configuration, quite a number of parking spaces, including parking that would expand along the western edge of the parcel and still avoid as much as possible the wetlands that is in this area. This area is all considered wetlands. And we looked at the imagery of this proposed library, which we thought would be appropriate and keep it consistent with the appearance of red brick in the Town Hall, as well as in the existing Crosser Library. No site is perfect. There are pros and cons to every site. So, we tried to, at each option, look at the pros and cons. As far as the Town Hall site is concerned, there were a lot of pros for it. It was a standalone building, didn't involve renovation work. Construction would be less complicated and it probably would be the quickest duration. One of the cons, though, is what would happen to the existing library site? How would that be redeveloped? Would the town retain control of it? Would it be yielded to a developer? And that was uncertain. And so, that was considered potential con. So, then we also studied the existing Crosser site. One of the complications on the existing Crosser site was that it's adjacent to a flood plain. The Wash Brook runs north and south along the western edge of this parcel. It does flood. The existing library's basement has been flooded a number of times and damage has occurred. So, that needs to be taken into account. And we looked at the possibility of even raising the building. In other words, raising it up higher so that we could get it out of the flood plain. We knew we would have to expand the existing building. The existing building is this tan-shaped area here. And so, we looked at the possibility of expanding it northward around the building here and then developing all of the parcel around it, including the space in the basement, using that as parking space. We know it's a tight site, but at least by doing that, we can get a library collection and the library functions above the flood plain. And then we looked at the possibility of expanding to the west. At that time, the Riley Lumber parcel was not owned by the town. It was a privately held parcel. So, but someone thought it would be a good idea to acquire that property and make it available for parking. That would relieve the burden of parking on the existing Crosser site. But then we would have to find a way to get across the Wash Brook, which is shown in blue here, traveling north and south. We looked at three-dimensional views of this parcel. This is the existing building, the existing parking around it. And at that time, there was a lumberyard across the brook. We could build a three-story addition, as I showed you in the previous diagram. It would be placed on the north side of the building. We could even expand the parcel northward and create some parking in that location. Or we could build the two-story building and then the bridge, connect that existing Crosser Library to future parking, library parking on the former library by Riley Lumber sign. If we were to do a cross-section through the site, this would be the relationship. We would have the new and expanded Crosser Library. Its main floor would be the same elevation as the front of the building. And then we would connect with the bridge across to the parking across the brook. This floodway would be about this wide in the event of flooding in the future. If we were looking from the parking lot back at the building, the elevation of that parking lot would lead right into the new Crosser Library. So, what are the pros and cons here? It looks like there are more cons on this site. It required additional site acquisition, which I understand may not be in question anymore because I believe the town owns the Riley Lumber parcel. Renovation and addition would take longer. It's more complicated. You may have to find swing space somewhere in town. And we have to do multiple moves in order to remove people from the building and then move them back. Then there's also potential abatement issues in the existing building. And the cost was a little bit more. That significantly more, a little bit more. And then, at the end of our study, there was some discussion about relocating the library to another part of town, to the Alvin Woods Center, which is the senior center, as well as parks and rec activities. And there is room on the parcel. So, we looked at that very, very briefly. We didn't look at it from a budget standpoint. And I believe you proceeded with the development of that project. So, now, is that a site contender still? I don't know. That's something for this committee to think about. We did do a cost analysis and this shows you where we were. This was back in 2016, developing the Town Hall site. We thought would be 19.7 million at that time. And either the two or three-story versions on the Crosser site would be a little over 20 million. So, they were pretty close in cost. Now, going forward, what are the major milestones? I thought I would share some thoughts with you about that. I know that you are possibly going to go to referendum in November of 2021. So, that's a major milestone that we should try to hit. We know that you have a state application to receive library grant. Typically, that application deadline is around September of every year. So, working back from those states, we would need to get town council approval for you to submit a grant application by July, let's say, next summer. And then backing up from that, we would need to have several meetings with town council, perhaps finance subcommittee, which would occur starting in the spring. I'm suggesting maybe April by April. So, between, let's say, October and April, you need to focus on site selection. What are possible sites in town? Study those options. Present those options to the committee. Come to some sort of consensus by committee members. And then bring the town council up to speed. I'm suggesting April would be a reasonable target. But we haven't had the benefit of any discussion with you. So, I would be open to your thoughts about that. We can come back to this slide later if you have some questions about this. Okay, so the last part will be Tai Su and Wit primarily. I may jump in at one point. Want to show you some library projects that we've done recently.
Okay. Every site is very unique and we're trying to capture and understand the uniqueness of each site and trying to come up with a design that responded to that particular site and also community. The first example is Dwight Library in Hartford. It's a very small addition to existing building, but it's a very important site. It's a very busy intersection of two street width, width shape of size. So, it's a very visible site. So, the idea is trying to attract people who pass by. So, it's like a finger, three fingers and three reading rooms and each looking outside the street. And also from outside, it's very inviting a feeling to come in. So, it become a quite interesting addition to that street corner. Wit?
Yeah, there we go. Sorry. This is the project we did at the main branch in Hartford for U Media, which is a teen center. I don't know if you're familiar with that U Media concept, which was developed from the University of Chicago Library a number of years ago, creating a space for teens to come and hang out after school and work on projects. It's a combination of gaming space, project space, maker space. They can work on crafts. They can work on technology. This one, in addition to, you know, sort of simple technology and tools, also had a recording studio that they could do recordings and video editing in there as well. So, it's been very successful for them. Next. This is a branch, another branch library in Hartford in the Park Street neighborhood, which is under construction right now. So, this will be the largest branch of the library, other than the main branch, 13,000 square feet. It's been an interesting process to work through, both with the neighborhood, with the historic commission, to arrive at a concept that was acceptable to everyone and something that fits into the, for a column of neighborhood in Hartford and still serves as a welcoming beacon for that neighborhood. Tai Su, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
It's a corner, a very busy, important split corner, broad street and dark street. So, we really emphasize openness of that corner and make libraries like a living room of this community and the inviting to coming in and just a very easy access. And this has a large community room upstairs. And you see a lower right-hand side. And it has a very large children's section and also a community classroom teaching, computers and other things. So, it would be not only library, it would be a really service to the community and feeling of community center. I'm excited. It's all the structures up, so looking forward to progress.
This is a project down at the main branch of the library in Hartford. When UConn decided to move their downtown campus down into that area, we worked with UConn and with the library to look at their existing space, see how to consolidate it to arrive on some available space that the UConn library could use within the main building. So, we carved out a space down on the ground level for the UConn students to use. It includes compact shelving, study areas, conference rooms, a digital media lab. And it's a place that's used both by the UConn students and by the general public as well.
Okay, this is the Wilton Library.
Oops, sorry. I'll leave that go. So, we skipped this slide. This is a Summers Library, which was finished a few years ago. And it's, the complication in this library was, was that we could not add and renovate this building unless there was swing space found. Fortunately, there was space in town to relocate the children's library, which was accessible and available at no cost. So, we relocated the children's library. And then there was some wiggle room in the library to be able to move people around as renovation occurred and as the addition was built. And this project roughly doubled the size of the Summers Library.
Okay, Tai Su.
Okay, this is a library in Wilton. It was an original building of 17,000 square feet and modern style building and designed by well-known architect Elliot Knowles. So, we wanted to continue same aesthetic, but the program calls for total almost 50,000 square feet building. So, it's tripping the existing building. The building had one courtyard, so we added another courtyard. And there is just wonderful performing space. And this actually, this performing space has a large sliding door and open to courtyard. So, during summer nights, they, you know, the performance happened not only indoor, but outdoor. It's a really wonderful building. And this received in 2005 or something, is the best library in Connecticut.
Okay, the end. So, at this point, I can go to any particular slide or I can, we can answer any of your questions. I turn it back to you.
All right, great. Thank you so much. That was wonderful. Are there any questions from any of the committee members or others about the presentation? Mark?
I realize that since four years ago, we have a new library director, Elizabeth. So, you know, if you do come on board, you'll be working with her and the library board and so forth. But in your experience over the last four years, have you seen any programmatic changes that, you know, in library design that, you know, what's happened over the last four years in your experience that might change the program we wrote four years ago generally?
Well, from my perspective, libraries have even become greater community centers than were previously. There's also a need for outdoor activities. In other words, activities that outsiders can come in and program spaces. So, if you have a business, for instance, in town that wanted to have a place where they could have an incubator space, that is becoming more and more important. People are working from home. Having the ability to find project areas is another activity that we see. Right now, we're getting ready to start a library addition and renovation in Glastonbury. That's going to go up to bid in about a month or so. And in that program, there's a need for a performance space. So, we're creating, in fact, we're helping them shrink the library collection in order to provide more square footage for things like outdoor performances. They have guitar performances, for example. They have visiting speakers. And another space is after-hours maker space, which is not in the library at the moment, but they want to be able to have a place where outside experts can come in and conduct workshops and teach people different kinds of technical skills. So, that's going to be a space that's available, adjacent to the library with separate entrance from the outdoors without having to actually go through the library itself. So, this is some of the more recent thoughts in library plan.
I'll just add one other trend that we've seen with libraries. You know, there's certainly, as we talked about, these teen centers or maker spaces oriented towards teens. And now it's evolved for us. It's really, people are interested in it for all ages. There's also been a growing amount of kind of sharing culture where you can, you know, you used to be able to come to the library and maybe rent a, rent a camera or recorder or something. And now that's expanding to potential to borrow equipment and things that you don't need to purchase that are available to the libraries, you know, sewing machines and things like that and all manner of things that can be borrowed and used by the community.
I had a question. This is Greg. I know in your timeline, you make reference to there being sort of community input following the draft to council. But my question is, have you seen projects whereby you involve the community sooner rather than later? I mean, I think it might be helpful for the community to have some input and, you know, sort of site selection and all those things. And in the timeline here, it says after we've already submitted a plan. Is it your experience that that is the way it's generally done? Or are there instances where the community is involved prior to a draft plan being formulated and presented to council?
No, I've seen it done during the study periods. So, in this timeline, actually, even suggesting some public presentations before any kind of final recommendation is made. So, I would think we would not need to work with town officials to identify potential sites, have that kind of report to the committee. But all of these public presentations could be earlier as well. I've also seen projects undertaken by doing a survey, a public survey, even before getting into any kind of site selection. So, it depends upon how much input you are willing to take from the public. Sometimes I have found that the public responds better to given information. Give them something to react to, rather than starting with a blank slate. So, you know your community. I would look to you for some direction on whether that can be started with a survey first or a little bit later in reaction to studies.
Great, thank you.
I have a question to follow up on Mark's.
Please go ahead, Lois.
Certainly, you've mentioned several programming changes. What kind of work would you do with respect to the changes in the Bloomfield population? For example, we've had, we're having quite We're having quite a boom of apartments being proposed and developed. Do we have to do all of that work again? Or have you... Would that be part of your charge?
Well, we could certainly bring in a consultant to help do any kind of analysis of the changing demographics in town to see if your patronage has changed as a consequence. It's not necessarily something that we would do ourselves, but we would certainly bring in a consultant. If you've worked with consultants in the past on analyzing your own patrons' requirements, we can certainly work with that consultant or we can identify another consultant to help us assess that.
In terms of demographics, do you need more than just what the population is? For the next 15 years?
Well, I think we would be interested in knowing, for instance, how many people might walk to the library? How many people would drive? My sense of Bloomfield is that, you know, I know there's been some recent developments near the center of town. I don't know the makeup of that development. I think there's been some apartments. And there may also have been some senior housing developed nearby. But I don't know how many people are those who would walk or they're going to get in their car and just drive a mile or half a mile. So I think you'd need to ask, do sampling, survey to see what kind of demand on parking would be there for your site. That would be one thing I'd be interested in knowing. Previously, we were using information from the existing library staff and administration on whether or not parking was adequate. I think we'd be interested in knowing from the potential users or constituents, whether there are already existing library patrons and whether something needs to be offered in your programming to have them use your library more often. So again, I think we'd have to bring in a consultant to help us identify those kinds of potential users.
But I would think we'd need to know the age breakdown too because the library proposals that we had before all had significant elements for children. And we want to know, I think, how many children do we have compared to adults and so forth?
That's correct. And whether or not you have children's programming, I know that that's been a rising service being done by libraries. Lots of children's programming, whether it's reading or it's speakers or activities. So yes, whether or not you have a rising population for children would be a major factor in your services. The other thing I might add is depending on the site that we're looking at, in particular, if it was one of the downtown sites in the center of town, be looking at what the development and the future is of the surrounding areas to that site. And if there are opportunities for symbiotic activities, whether it's shared parking or whether it's other development that's occurring around the site that would attract people who would then want to come to the library as well. So I think that would be an important factor to explore.
Any other questions, comments?
Greg, I have a question.
Yes, please, Michelle.
For the presenter. For those of us who weren't around, as in being assigned to the committee the last time around, it would be very helpful if you would be willing to provide this presentation to us electronically. Feeling that if you cannot do that, I would be particularly interested in at least having a copy of your site selection criteria. And I wondered with regard to the present Prosser Library site, whether you considered in your design concept the specification of stormwater as resource in your design concept?
Well, I'll answer the easy question first. Yes, you can have a copy of this presentation by all means. I'm sure it will be... I can have it forwarded to the chair of your committee, and I'm sure he'll make it distributed to all members of the committee. By all means, you're welcome to this information. It was all developed during a previous study. It's all in the public realm. So by all means, you can have a copy of it. As far as stormwater as a resource, that's an interesting notion. Can you share more what your thinking is?
Well, from the standpoint of looking at existing flood hazards and determining whether or not any of those boundaries can be amended, which many times they are, and also looking at stormwater runoff from the site, particularly with its flooding history, and looking at that stormwater as actually an artifact and directing it in different ways so that the public is aware that every time it rains, wonderful things happen, not only flooding, but wonderful things happen from the standpoint of adding water to our local waterways and also looking at it from the standpoint of polluting that water as little as we can. So when I look at that site, I think that there's that possibility. When I visit that site when it's raining, it reminds me of an interesting prospect. So I just wondered if you considered that at all when you looked at the different iterations that you thought might be possible for the existing building?
That is a big question. So the answer is it was not considered as a potential resource, as a feature that could educate people about the importance of water, about how it's important for the environment. That was not considered as part of the program. I think unfortunately, the existing library has suffered from damage in the past. So I think the attitude may have been more, what can we do to make sure that such damage doesn't occur again in the future? But what you do is, or what you're bringing up is a very interesting thing. People aren't aware of how this washroom is actually part of a much larger water course and how all of it is... You're part of a larger system. And so if you were made aware of just how far this water course is, the whole flood plain that's involved, how much of it travels downstream, and that would be a very interesting educational thing for the community to be aware of. Is it possible to change the course of water? Yes, it is. We've worked with civil engineers and we've worked in Army Corps of Engineer applications. We've had flood plains and flood courses remapped when there's evidence that supports that remapping. But you need to examine a huge watershed area to determine just how far in the surrounding area is the source of water and what are the potential developments in the future that could affect that water course. So you are part of a huge ecosystem. It would be nice to be able to explain that to the public and maybe make that a feature as part of your library. It's an interesting idea.
One final question. With regard to whether uses in libraries are evolving or devolving, do you ever run across uses proposed for potential libraries that you feel are not a good fit for libraries? Because it seems as though the definition of library is morphing into something very different. And my reason for asking it is if the resources should be allocated to some other use, some other building, some other site that would be more appropriate and more efficient from the standpoint of I can see how meeting rooms are really needed in our library. But from the standpoint of maker space and a lot of other very specific activities that I don't have an understanding of how many people would use that and what the cost to produce that would be. So I'm interested in knowing how you determine, number one, that those spaces are appropriate for libraries as we currently know them, not to say that we couldn't consider other uses. And I realize that's a long answer, but I am concerned about that. How you come about deciding what's appropriate with regard to the evolvement of libraries?
Well, I think you're hitting it on the answer yourself. Things are evolving. And whether or not a use is appropriate in the near future may not be the case on-term future. And so I think your approach might be... I think you might be better served by thinking in flexible terms. Can you build a space that can be adapted in the future without significantly tearing things apart, for example? And so it's more like a laboratory-type space, space that will allow you to accommodate change in the future more easily. I don't know if Whit or Tyseu want to lend their thoughts on this thing, but... Yeah, I think one of the things that is definitely a trend is the impact of the red kind of furniture and equipment that you have in libraries. And one of the things that allows the kind of flexibility that Richard is alluding to is looking at furniture and even the book stacks as well to be movable as much as possible, which allows you to reconfigure the space very easily when functions and needs change and even change the space very quickly for a special event, move things out of the way for other events. So, you know, really the key is the libraries have all these different functions going on. And it's not that we're looking to lock in any of those functions. We want to give the capability of this space being a multifunctional space that can adapt to tomorrow's needs as well as what you're envisioning right now.
Right. And Whit, if I could piggyback on that, that is what you've done in Hartford with the Park Street branch, obviously, is a big community space that's interactive and can be used multiple purposes.
Right.
And I think that is a real trend today with libraries is that you have space that can be multipurposed and you can use it for a conference with 150 people or you can turn it around and use it for different events to accommodate the community here in town. It's always helpful to have a big space like that so that we can have larger community gatherings. And what better place than to bring people into the library for something like that?
Absolutely. And one of the things with all of these programmatic changes and needs arising, you know, something has to give in order to fit everything into the space that you have available, either financially or programmatically. And certainly, you know, books will always be a part of the library, but I think the proportion of space allocated to books is evolving. And, you know, a lot of libraries are looking at, you know, tearing down their collection to the books that really are needed in circulation and need to be kept. And by freeing up some of that stack space, that provides the opportunity to adapt space for some of these other needs.
I hear... I see Ava has a hand up. Ava?
Yeah, I would say some of the assumptions regarding print versus electronic reading are not supported by the research. For example, the assumption is that kids would prefer to read electronically, would prefer Kindle. Every study that I've seen actually finds precisely the opposite. And my experiences with kids for the last 30 some odd years, I wound up giving away Kindles that we had and could not find a home for them. I finally wound up giving them to special educators. The kids absolutely would not use them. And there have been a lot of research studies there in School Library Journal and Library Journal. I would consult those carefully before any assumptions are made. And there are a lot of adults who prefer different modes of reading. That includes me. I use my Kindle if I'm reading a murder mystery, but when I'm reading rather heavy-duty nonfiction, I do not. I can't check resources. It's not developed to the point where I would be able to use it for nonfiction. There are also studies about brain function and the way we read, and not to get into huge detail, but there are cautionary notes in every single one of those studies about losing the kind of depth of thought and the complexity of thought when we read electronically. So I would say before any assumptions are made there that we would want to consult those rather carefully.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? I can't see everyone.
Right.
Mark, yes?
Can we turn the sharing thing off? Because I can't see people. I can just see the... Just see the document. Thank you.
Okay, Mark.
In terms of our target November 2021 referendum, you feel that that's reasonable, realistic?
I think it's realistic. Yes, I do. I've been hearing a lot of questions, though, in this meeting about reconsidering programming. I'm not sure where you are in terms of program. In the previous study, we had a defined set of spaces and a program that was established. If you... You may want to be revisiting that and in light of what I've heard this evening, what kinds of spaces should be considering? So if you looked at my timeline, you saw that there was a six-month duration in which we would be looking at sites and looking at options. And I think as part of that six months, you should be looking at programming as well. So yes, I think that there's... I feel comfortable with this timeline.
Richard, that's a perfect segue to our director because I think a lot of those decisions will be based on what our professional staff recommends and what they think. And so Elizabeth, I saw you had your hand up.
Yes, there was a lot brought up already in this meeting, and it's a lot to think about. I just wanted to point out the idea of changing space and evolving things and trends in libraries and the need to have an undefined space that may change over time and be responsive to the needs of the community, especially as the community needs change and evolve over time. It was very interesting with what Michelle was talking about with the environmental aspect. In my idea of a perfect library space, it involves the outdoors. And there's a landscape architecture that goes along with it that can be used for people and for library programs and for working space, et cetera. And I'm hoping that as a committee, we can think about that duality of the indoor and the outdoor and everything that goes along with it. There was a conversation about libraries having things, and we are in the process of doing that. We've started a library of things this year. And again, that will be a collection of materials that will be directly responsive to the needs of the community and will change over time. So in terms of space being undefined and being able to change space as needs arise, that would be very important in having a building that stands the test of time. As for programming, Bloomfield Public Library offers extensive programming. And I would say it probably has some of the highest programming compared to libraries in our part of Connecticut. And that is something that will continue. My background is in art librarianship, and I know that there's a lot of artists in our community. And the visual aspect of the library is near the top of the list of important aspects for me and having a very inviting space. The Dwight Branch of Hartford Public Library, that very inviting facade, being able to see into the library, having people, you know, have that, be able to see themselves in the library. One thing I should note is... myself and the board, we are very focused on breaking down barriers to access and part of that is people being able to see themselves in the space that we create. So involving the community in that part, I think, is really important and not having an intimidating structure or relying too much on traditional approaches to facades and entryways. And that was one thing that I really loved about the design at the Prosser, the current Prosser location was that bridge. What a fun way to enter a building and have people who may not have been library users in the past be curious about exploring that. And as for the parking lot feature and that indoor-outdoor dichotomy, I was thinking of the Dia Beacon that came to mind, the parking lot and how it is completely, all the materials in the parking lot are local materials, local plants, all of those things. And you know, this bloom field come bloom with us mantra, there's a lot at play that I think would really help make this building a success.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And I know Vedant, you had your hand up and...
I did. Thank you so much. I kind of want to, I kind of share some of the same concerns that Michelle Bononey shares with regards to size. And I fear that we will have more space and unutilized space if we build it based on the schematics and floor plans provided thus far. I continue to hear community space use. But when these plans were developed, this was prior to our new senior and social services building having been built. And that, I think, is an answer and a remedy to that community space. Now, I also can agree with some of what Elizabeth Lang stated with regards to the evolution of the library. But I think that we do have to be cognizant that it may be to our disadvantage to build something as big as what's been presented thus far and it be spaced that just goes unused because we have another option that hadn't existed when these designs were created. So I think we should all pause and please be considerate of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank everyone. I don't know if there are any more questions or feedback, but I would say that part of the presentation that was made was just to share what they've done in the past. We're not locked into anything going into the future. They're just sharing what was proposed the last time they had a look at this. And again, wanted to thank Tai Su Kim Partners for their time and expertise. And we will make sure that everyone on the call here in our committee gets a copy of the presentation. And I don't know if there are any additional questions, but if not, I will, you know, we'll let our guests sign off and they're more than welcome to stay for the last couple of minutes of our meeting. But thank you, Richard, Tai Su, Deanne, and Witt.
We'll sign off now. Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, I thought that was very informative and helpful and thank everyone on the call for their input into that process. We only have a couple of minutes left and I know Nancy, there's a finance committee meeting that you have to coordinate. So next on the agenda is the next meetings. We have a meeting coming up on September 9th and also the 23rd. I wanted to just run a couple of things past the committee. As everyone saw, hopefully saw that the mayor posted an article in the Messenger on the 14th. And at last meeting, we talked about sending an article to the Messenger to inform the town about what our plans are, what we're doing. I thought the mayor's article was very detailed and comprehensive and my thought personally is that we may not need to piggyback off of that for a submittal for Friday, but wait until there's something of substance before we post another article about the committee. But I wanted to find out what you all think about that.
I agree with that.
Yeah, okay. So maybe, maybe we'll wait until September and give some thought about putting something else in. The second item is, wanted to chat with you all about changing the time of our meeting. One of our committee members is not able to make the six o'clock meeting, but if we switched our meetings to five o'clock and went from five to six or 6:15, it would make it convenient for this person to participate. And it would also leave some of our folks to get home earlier. And I wanted to see if people would be okay with moving the start of our meetings to five o'clock as opposed to six o'clock.
I'm sorry, I'm still working at five. So would it be possible if it could be moved to a start at seven? If six o'clock isn't like, like, you know, convenient for them?
Michelle? You're muted.
I'm muted. Sorry about that. Am I, are you hearing me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm very sorry. That makes it difficult if we are going to have Wednesday meetings because I have the COVID-19 meetings and I almost end up with back-to-back meetings. And I love to volunteer, but that's sort of like a lot to move it up. I have a little bit of time in between to recover. So that would be difficult for me.
Five o'clock would be difficult, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Does splitting the difference help? Five thirty, does it help both parties?
It could.
Vedant, does that work for you, five thirty? Can you make five thirty?
It's better than five.
It is better than five. And because, you know, it all depends on what's going on with my caseloads at the time, I can give it a try, but I don't want to be in that person's position by being unable to attend because it's been moved to a time that I can't accommodate.
I also cannot join anytime earlier than six o'clock.
Okay.
So sorry about that.
No, it's okay. And that's why we're discussing it to see if there might be an accommodation. So what about by a show of hands? Why don't we do that? How many people would like to keep at six o'clock? Show of hands and then just make these one, two, three. How many can do five thirty? Okay. And I guess another option is always a different day of the week.
I hate to say it, but considering the fact that there's right now only one person that can't make the six o'clock, that may be the defining thing, as opposed to many people who can't make it.
That's correct.
Yeah, I feel bad, but we're never gonna, 100%.
No, but it was worth a discussion and thank everyone for their input on that. And it looks like we'll have to keep to our regularly scheduled day and time. The last thing that I have on the agenda is that obviously Tai Su Kim Partners presented tonight. We're hopeful that when we come back on the ninth, we'll be ready for a detailed conversation about what you heard tonight. You'll have the presentation either tonight or tomorrow morning. If there are any questions in the interim, please feel free to reach out to Mark or me or Nancy or whomever. But it's my hope at the September 9th meeting that we can talk a bit more in detail about the scope and get into more technical issues about the costs associated with that. And because according to our charge, this committee has the flexibility to choose, to reengage the previous architect. If we don't, we have to go out to bid for a new architect. So obviously that is something that we need to sort of nail down as soon as we can. Because if it's the sentiment of the group that folks feel that they want to broaden the scope and look at other architects, we need to build that into our timeline. So I just would ask everyone to take some time to review the presentation and to give it some thought. Lois? You're muted.
I have just a peripheral question, but I would like to know the answer before we get further. And that is, are we thinking that any of this could also impact the other library? So that if we were planning, are we really just planning for one building or are we planning for library services in general? If it developed, that some services might better be offered at the other library and that would take some changes to that library?
So my understanding is the charge is open. I mean, we are to make a recommendation to the council and I think that's what we need to decide. I mean, I guess it would depend on the location of the library. One of the criteria would be where the recommended library would be, how it might impact both current sites. So I think it's open.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, I would suggest that in order to have a successful referendum, we need to address townwide library services in this.
Correct. Thank you. Nancy, do we have any public comments?
We have, we have several people here. If there's, yes, we have a Sten Kaps person that would like to make a comment, so I'm going to let them talk. Go ahead, Sten.
Yes.
You have to unmute yourself, Sten.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. This will be quick. I would suggest that the minutes, based on the slides that I saw real fast, identify the current usable space in the library Prosser, which I think was 20,470, and the plans that were done in the past showing the total space of less than 50% more than that, less than twice that, 36,000 and something. I think it's important for people to have an idea of how big are we now and how big are we talking about being? Elizabeth would talk at length about how much space she wants, but I'll just leave that there as a comment. Second comment, 330 Park Avenue, don't get upset, was mentioned as a potential site. I think it's worth the committee's action to ask TSK if they could provide an estimate similar to the Park Avenue estimates of a building there. If they picked a building up and put it at 330 Park Avenue, what would it cost? And if I go a step further, having heard the questions about community space and so forth, being on the HSF Building Committee, I know this is not popular, but those two buildings could complement one another at that site wonderfully. And that's just something for the committee to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? I guess not.
Is there any new business from any of the committee members? Anyone have any closing thoughts, comments, concerns? Okay, great. Well, if not, I really want to thank everyone for their time and participation tonight. And we will get out the presentation from this evening and make sure that the minutes, you'll have everything in short term. And thank you all again and we'll see you on the 9th of September.
Thank you. See you then.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion, I vote for adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Seven oh seven, Nancy.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Night, everybody.